Everybody. This is Grand Forks City Council's community in the hole from Monday, May twenty second. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks here at the hive under item one called order one forty one. Welcome to the roll call.
Kyle?
Here.
Here. On ski?
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Awesome. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Under item two, updates with information items. Two point one PFAS multi-district class action presentation. Mr. Phelan, are you leading this or Mr. Gostin? Yes, sir.
This is an informational for council time regarding a multi-district class action. That. Ms. Clapp has reached out to me on a couple of occasions and I wanted just to alert the council of this. Potential class action. I'm not making any recommendations tonight to take any action on it. It's just informational because there's still some work to be done from the city staff to review this. And also want to reach out to talk to the communities within the city or within the state of North Dakota to, because I know they've been reached out to as well and find out exactly what they plan on doing. So it's more informational than anything else. It is informational only for you tonight, so.
Great. Thank you. So Ms. Clapp, are you interested in speaking?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for having myself and my colleague Steve Acquario here. I have a presentation or we have a presentation for you on PFAS. Just to give you a little bit of background, I've been working on this case with Napoli Schkolnick. And Steve Acquario is a partner at Napoli Schkolnick and he is very heavily involved in this litigation. He's truly an expert on the subject matter and is working on this day in and day out. And I'm going to turn it over to him in just a minute because I, we want to be respectful of your time. We know that the meetings get long and since this is just informational, we just want to give you a little bit of background and hopefully a little bit better understanding of what PFAS is and what the litigation entails. So Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, Christian. Nice to meet everybody, the council members. I apologize for being in the car here. I pulled over. I'm actually constantly giving on the road presentations on PFAS to municipalities. I've spent twenty five years of my career as a counselor for local government officials. That is my expertise. That is my role in the firm. I head the local government department. And also I'm on the environmental department within Napoli Schkolnick law firm. We represent local governments around the United States right now. In most of the states, there's, there's a certain number of states that have more contamination than others. But sooner or later, folks, it's gonna, it's just gonna be everywhere. What we're talking about here is PFAS. And I like to break it down to just two of the five thousand chemical combinations of PFAS, which is used by industry and by firefighting foam. And there's two types of PFAS of that, of that thousands of lists that we're, we want to talk to you about tonight. It's called PFOA. And PFOS. So if you just Google that, everything in the world would come up at you. These are two types of chemical compounds that science has now been able to catch up with. These, these, these chemicals have been used by industry, paper lining, metal fabricators for, for decades, since it came into existence in the nineteen fifties. You could see on, if you go a couple of slides through, Christian here, I'll walk through these slides. I know we don't have much time, but I don't want to take up all the council's time. But here, we're showing here pesticides. We all remember Teflon, growing up, the commercials that, that pan that worked so well. Well, it turned out that that pan Teflon had some toxic properties to it. Paints, fast food packaging, the properties of PFOA and PFOS make that pizza box so anti-grease. You know, it repels grease and that's what it was used for in industry. And here are the manufacturers that made PFOA and PFOS. Big, big multinational companies, some of the largest in the world. You see three M there. DuPont, you'll see a company, Kymours there as well, Kitty Tyco, where manufacturers like national foam. They made a firefighting foam, but PFOS was solely produced by three M in the United States. Here again is the industries. See that metal manufacturing, oil and gas industry, metal coating, chemical manufacturing, plastics and resins. And importantly, although it doesn't really show it on the bottom there, is airports. And so what was happening at airports, this, this chart here showing, this is the United States here picking several areas of the country where manufacturing or industries used this, these types of chemicals, hundred thousand facilities across the United States, which may to commerce or into the environment, this particular type of, of chemical. And you can see also on the right side of this slide that it is now been definitively linked to health concerns, to certain types of cancers, bladder, kidney, prostate, testicular, thyroid problems, high cholesterol, other types of health carcinogens and health effects. Up until this point, we didn't have that data, but now through studies we do. This shows you the airports of the United States where the firefighting foam was used on airports. And this is a typical map that you would see, of course, every state having airports. But it shows you the level of where this type of contaminant was sprayed in firefighting foam around the United States in our airports.
And just to add to that too, Steve, also this firefighting foam was used quite a bit on air force bases as well, which as you all know, Grand Forks has a very large air force base. And we know that it was used there as well. You can kind of see the little dot where Grand Forks is.
Thank you, Christian. Solid waste landfills. So if you look at the life cycle of these contaminants, it's pretty easy to understand. It's, it's so pervasive that it is, it gets into the environment. Here's just showing other PFAS and one four dioxane, drinking water contamination and pollution sources around, around the United States. It breaks out the various chemicals, PFOA, PFOS, one four dioxane, other different types of contaminants. There's a lot of legacy contaminants that are in our environment. One we wanted to talk to you about tonight was what's called AFF or A triple F. As Christian mentioned, this was extensively used on our military bases, our air force bases, military depots, ammunition, ammunition depots and areas around airports where I was talking about before, where we were spraying the firefighting foam because the federal government mandated we use a certain type of firefighting foam. It was used in repeated trainings by our volunteer firefighters that we used on the airports to put out any airplane fires and again, used in burn pits extensively. So what did, what did these companies know when they made this, this firefighting foam? When did they know it? And what did they do about it? This case, folks, is really a very simple case about a failure to warn. This is a defective product that was put into commerce that was used all over the United States, in North Dakota, in New York, in Wisconsin, in South Dakota Sioux Falls, in Michigan, in California, you name it. And where there's an air force base, this type of particular contaminant is in the environment because the MSDS sheets that they gave us when we used this foam told us to use it. It was safe to be sprayed off into the environment and it is a forever chemical. So if it was put in the environment sprayed in nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty, that contaminant, that plume, if you will, is still with us today. So a lot of testing has been done around the United States. If you, if you look at the northeastern part of the state, if you look in Michigan, heavy testing going on right now, Wisconsin, the south, certain areas of the United States have done testing, mandatory testing, and it's showing the presence of what's called an emerging contaminant. It's called an emerging contaminant by the United States because they have the technology now to, to find trace aspects of PFAS in the drinking water at very, very, very low levels. It's being able to be detected in a part of a trillion. So this is one part of a contaminant PFOS into one trillion parts of water or one trillion parts of soil. So it's in our, it's, it's in our drinking water. It's in our landfills where we threw away all this stuff or with manufacturers simply discharged it into our rivers or into our waters or it was discharged on our airports and it impacts our municipal water. It hits our solid waste treatment, our wastewater treatment plants and ends up being in our biosolage, which we end up spreading around in our crops and into our cattle and on and on and on it goes. So.
Your clarity. Thank, thank you. That, that is so, the people of Grand Forks are pretty smart. And I think you painted a very clear picture as to why you're, you're here today. There are forever chemicals that have been sprayed at the air force base and in and around our community. And so what, what specifically are you looking for? What are you asking us?
We, we, well, I appreciate and respect the corp council's recommendation to you. And I'm not going to certainly suggest anything that, that council, city council is not comfortable with doing. I would ask you to approve a retainer and file immediately, as soon as you can, that the defendants in this particular case, because the United States acted in so quickly, they went from a four hundred part per trillion to a seventy parts per trillion. And folks, right now it's a zero. There should be a zero detect in our drinking water and that's the recommendation. And it's going to be the, the law or the regulation, regulation of the US EPA at the end of this year. So we are encouraging, because I have looked at your testing, water testing reports. We are encouraging you to move this as quickly as you can because like we saw with opioid manufacturers, a lot of these companies are going to declare bankruptcy very quickly. And I'm not talking about three M. I'm talking about Kitty. Kitty, of course, and we all know that name with fire extinguishers. They've been in the firefighting foam business. They have declared bankruptcy. And in order to secure your rights or any claims that you may have, we need to get your case file into this federal litigation. There's no cost to the city. It's a contingency contract. There's no hourly rates or anything. It's, we assume all that risk of getting it filed. But the, the reason why we wanted to get into your, your council meeting, and we do appreciate you allowing us to come in, is to, is to really encourage you to file this claim, protect your rights and preserve them before bankruptcy proceedings take over. And we are confident that that is going to happen. Here, this slide is showing you the treatment that this contaminant can be treated through granulated activated carbon or ion exchange. There are a number of treatment facilities here, but it's expensive. It can cost millions of dollars and have operational costs ongoing for years and years and years. So.
And I think also just to note too, is that a lot of the treatment plans have to be fitted to actually treat PFAS because the equipment that's in most treatment plants now just doesn't take the PFAS out of the water.
That's right. And same with your drinking water and with your wastewater treatment. The first we see, the, the litigation that we are spearheading, if you will. We represent hundreds of water districts, cities, counties, towns and villages, water utilities, strictly water providers. That the initial focus of this litigation is going to be on water districts. We're then going to turn to airports. We're then going to turn to wastewater treatment operations. And there's a trial that's scheduled for next week. So the trial is coming next week and the defendants are really trying to come up with some sort of resolution. We're having ongoing talks with them. They do not want to see this go to trial because the liability surrounding this issue of contamination, I'll dare say, it could reach into the trillions of dollars. And that's, that's as a result of some studies. So, you know, that's it in a nutshell. This chart here shows you how quickly this is moving along. There's been a, a water provider that has been chosen out of Florida to represent all of the water districts, the city of Stewart, Florida. But we would be happy and honored to earn your, 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 your ability to have us represent you and work through your corporation council. We have local governments, again, water districts all across the United States. We are leading this effort and this, this multi-district of all states have filed into this. Or any city where there's been a contamination has filed into this. And I, and I, I hate it to overwhelm you with all this. There's a lot to go through in a short period of time. But it seems like you do know that you are familiar with this, with the air force base nearby. And I'll just stop there and turn it over to Christian for any follow up.
Mr. Wyman, did you have a question?
I'm just assuming that Mr. Gostin is going to bring some information back and instill some.
Mr. Gostin?
Of course. Yeah, like I said, today was just introduce you to, to this concept. I just want to talk to your staff, Melanie Parby, Lisa Button, Chad Lips, Gary Lorenz, or Fire Chief. I also wanted to reach out and we, we have had communications with peers across the state. Their city attorneys and, and public works staff have been communicating to see exactly what they intend to do and coordinate that to a certain degree. So it was more a matter of introducing this to you tonight. And that, that's, that, that's it. And we'll have further, if something else comes forward, we'll bring it to your attention first.
Thank you, Mr. Guston. Ms. Clapp, would you like the last word?
Um, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. Thank you for your time today. And I do just want to stress that time is of the essence in this matter. So I understand, you know, city councils only can move so quickly. But I just, I do want to put this on your radar because it is something that is important to remediate. And I think that there are damages that Grand Forks can obtain from this lawsuit. And I just, I think it would be very wise to secure those, the opportunity to receive any sort of damages for remediation.
Thank you so much. Thank you both for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
For having us.
Thank you.
Bye.
I know. Any questions by the council for the city attorney? Moving on, item three, discussion items, three point one, application for taxi cab license from party pilot. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the city council. Received an application for a new taxi company starting in town. Name of the company is Party Pilot. He's starting out with just one vehicle, sole proprietor own. And that does require city council approval. So here this evening, if you have any questions, Mr. Hagen is here.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Wyman was seconded by Southie. Any other comments? Very none. All those in favor saying aye. I have a close sign. Most carries unanimously on two point two, and then city code section twenty one dash zero three one one, paragraph six relating to taxi cabs and meters.
This relates to the last item in looking at the new taxi cab application. He did bring forward that it's becoming more commonly used instead of having the old mechanical meter with the leg that you drop. There are various apps and other electronic meters that are out there in our code specifically references one with the mechanical system. So looking to update code, we borrowed some language from city of Faraway uses to define what a taxi meter is. And then also removing that reference in paragraph six to the play. Appreciate the help from the Chinese office to give me that updated language.
Any questions on the language? Comment? By Soski, started by Wyman. Any other comments? Very none. All those in favor saying aye. Posting time. Which carries unanimously on three point three. Request wave city code section nine dash zero three zero seven for the special event, extreme water sports endurance test event on June seventeen, twenty twenty three. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the council. This is a, an event that has been done for several years. I know at least fifteen that I'm aware of. It's a request to allow them to swim in the river. What they are extreme North Dakota event.
Any questions from the senior? Move by B, second by Tommy. Any other comments? Very none. All those in favor saying aye. Close the same sign. Most carries unanimously on two point four. Request for approval of noise variance in letter with tent for co-mingling of the boat. Excuse me, the following special events, third street hospitality, bringing businesses as a perfect early downtown development association, blues on the red and Johnny Holmes town square event. Listen young.
Again, now comes President Sandy, members of the council. These are, these are standard brick and barley participants that have brought many, many different events to us. They are used to working with crowds. The first one on A is the return to Blues on the Red, which we're very excited for. And it's going to be hosted by Downtown Development Association. And Sarah Hork and her team over at Brick and Barley will be having all the alcohol. And they would like to ask for an exemption. So maybe have a co-mingling. With B, same party, Sarah Hork from Third Street Hospitality, doing business as Brick and Barley will be doing their annual Johnny Holmes Town Square event.
Questions? Move on and lose approval. Started by Soski. Any other comments? Very young. All those in favor saying aye. Close the same sign. Which carries unanimously. Thank you. On three five, create district and design engineering consultation services agreement. Project eight seven oh six, district five ninety seven, stormwater pond, pump station, enforcement or current leading up sixty seven divisions.
Mr. Leibman, being. Good evening, comes President Sandy, committee members. This is the first project to develop the recently planted parental land sick re-subdivision. This project will construct a regional stormwater pond, a pump station, a force main. The pump station enforcement is essentially the outlet to discharge it eventually to the English Cooley diversion. This was proposed to the city by the developer, it was Simonson Station Stores, Mr. Arbson. And is requested to be special assessed minus a city cost share. Stormwater pond city cost share is based on the acreage of the drainage area. The maximum acreage for city benefit is a hundred and eighty acres, which would qualify for a max of a twenty percent city cost share. This is well over three hundred acres of drainage area. So it's very clearly would apply or apply for the city twenty percent cost share. If you look at the attachments to the staff report, there is a map of the drainage area. So you can see that this services west of the interstate ditch all the way out to North Fifty Fifth Street. Or excuse me, west to Fifty Fifth Street, north to Twenty Seventh Avenue North. And there's a boundary between Gateway Avenue and Seventy Fifth Avenue. So very large areas would be serviced by this pond. The estimated cost is four point six million dollars for the pond. The consultant task order that's also attached to it with, which we are proposing with CPS Grand Forks is roughly six hundred thousand dollars that encompasses design and construction services. There's also included a cost of land, I say land purchase, but there's no upfront purchase. It's been dedicated for this purpose and the developer has requested to be reimbursed for the portion that does not benefit their land. So that will be done through the special assessment process, which is typical. So with that, the twenty percent city cost share is roughly one point one million dollars, which would come from fund fifty four hundred. And tonight we are requesting creation of the special assessment district, approval of the engineer's report and approval of the task order with CPS in the amount of five hundred and ninety nine thousand, five hundred dollars.
Questions from Mr. Leibman? Uh, yes, Mr. Lee. Excuse me, one point one million is that for me or? Thank you. Is the one point one million available right now?
That we are requesting a bunch of amendments as part of this. And it has been approved through finance and reported through finance and one works departments. Before the debt service.
Pardon?
Before the debt service.
Okay.
We are sure.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Wyman? I'm with you. Wyman was approved. Tommy seconds. Any other questions? Very none. All those in favor saying aye. Close the same sign. Bush carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Three point six. On three point six, sorry, small cell agreement with Verizon, project seventy nine thirty two. Good evening.
Good evening. We are asking approvals for the final negotiated agreement between Verizon Wireless and the city of Grand Forks. This agreement will allow Verizon to install micro cellular equipment and facilities on several of our streetlight poles throughout Grand Forks. This provides Verizon the ability to expand some of their newer features and services to their users and customers.
So thank you. They're going to be pulling power from the power poles, correct?
Uh, well, we are providing their own.
You know, burning their own power?
Yes, interesting.
Great. Any comments?
I have some questions. Um. So are these just like little devices that'll be placed at the top?
Yes, they're smaller and their antennas. They'll all be placed on poles.
Do these devices emit any radiation?
As much as I would assume a cellular facility would, yes.
Um, is there any way that like us as a city could like test these ourselves and see how much radiation each one of these are giving off?
I would. We're supposed to be somebody with Verizon. Oh, yes. You know. This is Tamara. With Verizon. And she probably asked a question far better than I can.
Thank you. Hi. Hi, nice to meet you. I'm Tammy Herman. I'm with Verizon Wireless. And thank you for putting this on the agenda today. So I think, is that your question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yes. So these, your question was whether or not the city could test it?
Um, well, that was more towards like also the city department, but do you know what kind of radiation these devices give off? What is the radius of this radiation?
Right. So the city, the, the testing of our equipment, that authority is completely held with the FCC. So our, we, our devices are emitted, I guess, and can't think of the word right now, but well below the maximums that could, they can be emitted that. So we don't, they're not cranked up all the way. They're turned off.
So there is possibility for them to be cranked up all the way and more radiation to be emitted.
All of that I don't know. I don't know. I'm real estate, so that I.
Um, no, there's any way that's on Verizon that we could get some kind of readings on what kind of radiation or how much radiation these.
We could follow up and talk about it. Absolutely.
Okay. And then like from the city side, I would like to see how so the city actually perform maybe some of our own tests. I mean, I did do a little bit of research about these and I do know that you guys are in compliance with the FDA and the WHO. I read about that, but I really feel the past couple of years that maybe the FDA and the WHO don't have our best interest in mind. And so I would like to see the city actually go out and do these tests, you know, and really see what kind of damage we might be doing to our citizens.
And Mr. Phil?
Council President Sandy and council member Soski, we, we can do that. And maybe we'll see where you're going to roll these facilities out. Maybe you can do some, you know, some testing of those sites. And that was, there was a controversy when this was rolling out and, and the Trump administration determined, I think, the FCC that this was a national initiative and they were going to move forward and limit locals' ability through interstate commerce or whatever the regulation, but we can certainly.
This is the rollout of the five G network. Right. Exactly. That's going on. It's going on all across the country.
Yes.
And I think one of the concerns was if your Verizon, the protocol, wanted to make sure that, you know, this rolled out throughout the country and limited our local ability to regulate this. But we can certainly monitor. There's no reason why we can't monitor and we, we will uphold with. I'll like Lisa and we'll see what we can do locally just to keep our community. I know there's concerns in neighborhoods, whether it's noise or environmental, what are, what are these things, uniting and all those.
The thing that I don't want to have happen is I don't want to be sitting here in five years getting a presentation from an attorney saying, oh, the science caught up now. You know, that's what I don't want to have happen. And I just want to make sure, like, will we as private citizens be able to know where these are located at? I mean, it does say that they have to be disguised, which is fine, but would there be a place maybe where citizens can go and look where these will actually be placed?
We could actually work on that and do that with other cities. We could actually work on that and do that with other cities, so. That's what I was gonna say, far worse than track some on their GIS.
Okay.
And so every time I pull a permit, I give your public works department the Latin line and then you can drop them on your GIS. So just like you're looking at a power pole or a light pole sewer.
Yep, absolutely.
Councilmember Sowski, uh, Mr. Gossett asked me in my words for us to.
I'm curious.
Part of the agreement is that they they have to make application to install these things. And there's uh, it's section four point one that sets out all the items that they have to provide. Um, for example, the GIS location, that um, construction specifications and product specifications for all planned installation. So there's, there's quite a bit of information that they're sharing with us in advance of the application. And then the city engineer uh determines if they've met all the terms and conditions under the agreement. So I think some of the questions you're posing are uh things that we're gonna, we're gonna learn about uh through the application process.
So is this, so we're not, are we approving them to do all this then, could be something right now, or where exactly are we?
You're approving an agreement that sets what procedure for them to then make application to the city to install these uh facilities on municipal uh structures.
Okay.
Um, and then there's a a fee, if you're relative minor fee that that goes along with the application, so that's all it was is teeing it up for the, for the process.
Okay, so this is not saying that, yes, they're going to be allowed to do this.
Well, as long as they meet all the requirements within the agreements, within the lease agreement.
Correct. Facility will be included.
So we will be, with this agreement, we will be able to get the radiation readings that, or you guys will be able to provide those.
It's separate from this, it's not contained in the agreement and it wouldn't be contained in the agreement. And maybe that's what you want to speak about, where the authority lies for that.
Right.
So it it wouldn't be, that type of requirement wouldn't be contained.
I mean, if you guys put them up and they're fine on radiation and you go and crank them up and then where do we sit as a city, you know?
Well, we're required to keep our licenses that we spend a lot of money on. The FCC will come through and test our equipment, so we're required to have licensed equipment that we operate. And so they're frequently tested to make sure that they're well below the maximums that they can operate at, whether the FCC even allows for that.
Um, how do you, once it's placed up on the pole, then can you remotely um adjust these units? Like, can you remotely turn up the frequency?
I don't know, that's a, that would be a question for our F engineer, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, okay.
Mr. Bean.
Please follow up.
Um. Do we have a, like, this is just Verizon that's going in, do we have a plan citywide for the implementation of five G? How we're gonna go about doing that, you know, for really all providers, um, is this intended to be community wide or a select area? What, what's the more details of this process or?
This agreement is with Verizon explicitly. Back in uh week twenty twenty, we approved uh an ordinance for providing these facilities on our structures. With a lot of this information being in our agreement.
Was that again for the, the one provider or for all?
Seem like all providers, but the ordinance set out the standards for, for all providers. This agreement is for Verizon.
For Verizon, so we could have a specification of this with every provider that wants to come to Grand Forks. We'd have different sets of equipment, they'd have different locations where they feel and have engineered the right equipment, I'm going to assume.
That's correct, we're looking at, what we've talked about is our need is over by the Columbia Mall. So just, you know, there's a lot of density over there and so you have a gap, a coverage gap there. So that's what we're looking at, what prices.
It wasn't a range of the top.
Thousand feet.
So every thousand feet?
No. There wouldn't be a tower every thousand, there wouldn't be a small cell every thousand feet.
What would that basically be? Two thousand?
I'm sorry.
What would the spacing between towers typically be?
I would have to go back, I think your ordinance has some environment in it, so I'd have to go back and check that out. Um, but it really, it it really depends on where these are fed back into our macros. And so they're meant to offload that, so it kind of depends where the macro is, where the light pole is that we're attaching to, and exactly what we're trying to hit. So, you know, if it's, it's, you know, the Columbia Mall, I think, has just got a lot of traffic in it. It needs uh better capacity to use their cell phones, make calls.
Thank you, Mr. Bean, um, further questions? Tim, Mr. Move, move, I mean, moves, second, second by Wygle. Any other comments? Very none, all those in favor, say a five, a saying aye. Oh, same sign.
Aye.
Most carries the Soski since, thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Namison. Being here, uh, three point seven, visual project eighty six forty three, bus wash and rain harvesting components. Phil.
Council President Sandy, I, we have Mr. Gergen online, but I'll, I'll try to lead this one. We want you to approve the bid by NS Construction for the bus, bus wash and then to um reject the bids on the rainwater system. And it just came into ISO, um, reject the bids on the rainwater, but approve the bus wash uh to NS Construction as uh noted in their staff recommended motion.
Any questions about the projects? Um, approval by.
Based on staff.
Wygle, based on staff recommendation, second by Osowski, any other comments? Very none, all those in favor, say a five, a saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Creating unanimously, three point eight, current academy land transfer project update.
It's true. I have two, Cheryl can pull up two um graphics um to just show you what you're approving as part of, um, that's, there you go. So when, uh, as you recall, when the jobs development authority did purchase uh the former Holiday Inn um way back in the day. So that's that piece and then also the, the purple piece, uh, which was a former gas station that that was associated with um, that holiday insight, so that was the J, that's the J property. The other thing you did as a city council is that we dedicated um backup their share place. Very, um, back up in that green area, um, there's that area into the north and to the east, which is city properties. We also agreed to dedicate that, so tonight what we're doing is, um, if you can go to the next visual show there. So the CBB or the visit greater, um, visit greater Grand Forks is to the north and their parking lot. The parking lot, um, will have, that will remain in the city of Grand Forks, the city owns that property along with the parking lot. Um, there may be some shared use of that parking lot, but that one plot to the north and to the east, we would, you would transfer ownership um to Grand Forks Public School. And then later we're gonna come back to the growth fund and JDA to transfer the property um that is the former Holiday Inn and that gas station property. So that's, that's what we're transferring um here today, just the city property and you'll be transferring hopefully the former Holiday Insight um to the Grand Forks Public Schools, so they can start uh with construction of the current impact academy. I thought Eric Ripley was gonna be here to give you a quick update, he is. Uh, very exciting back there. Um, so with that, Cheryl, can you change down to the presentation and um Eric will give us a quick update on where we're at with the, the main part of this is to provide program.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ripley, thanks for being here.
President Sandy, members of the council, always a privilege to be in front of you and being able to talk, not only to yourselves, but also specifically about this project. Um, I'm very excited uh to be able to provide uh an update related to uh the career pack academy and we're trying to bring um the presentation up there. I think it's the, the other on town. Um, I would reference it as to bring this up, that this is, um, this has been a marathon, not a sprint. It's okay, your staff report, you'll see dates back in August of twenty one, right? November of twenty one, where uh, where your body approved the concept of providing the, the donation of multiple pieces of a land as part of the fundraising efforts uh to be able to reference the state, uh, the state grant. Uh, we submitted our grant in December twenty one, right, we're in um, May of twenty three, it's a long time. And so it felt appropriate tonight to give just this body an update that we're wrapping the project, um, answering the questions you might have. And and again, um, discuss a little bit about the schedule, the timeline as uh we're moving forward to making this reality. So um, just a, a rendering of what the uh conceptual like concept of the building would look like from the outside uh looking in and let's go to the next slide, please. So how did we get here? Um, just some quick bullet points, there's obviously from the school district side of uh, and what, what my job is, is in terms of overseeing career tech education opportunities, uh, desire to expand available CTE courses, not only for students within Grand Forks and surrounding communities, uh, but also opportunities for adult education uh and in upscaling. Um, along with that, obviously there's workforce pipeline shortages that not only affect our region, but statewide and and across the nation. Um, and then through a state matching grant, through the pandemic, there was an availability of capital coronavirus project funds. There were specific uh uses that the state could utilize those funds for, one of them being a multi-use educational facility uh for community and CTE centers, so we fit that bill. And so uh during the sixty seventh legislative assembly, the line share that allocation from the federal level uh was appropriated in the form of a state matching grant um to challenge communities to uh raise funds locally uh potentially then applying at match of the state level. Um, that of course then brought um a lot of synergy within uh those top two pieces of workforce pipeline shortages and uh desire to expand CTE opportunities for students, um, brought those two uh forces together and um embarked on a, a very fast but um very productive fundraising campaign uh where we're able to raise uh significant funds uh from our local industry partners, of which certainly the city council was a key player uh in making that happen um through the concept of this land transfer. Um, I referenced the collaboration with rural schools that maybe what's not as well known is for the last eleven years uh the Grand Forks Folk Schools has been collaborating with uh seven surrounding school districts uh to the west, uh, the rural school districts, Laramore, Northwood Hills, Bernal, Mayport, um, Central Valley, I'm not gonna forget a couple in there. Um, but we've been collaborating with those school districts to deliver um online CTE courses well before the concept of distance education and and COVID and things of that nature, uh, we're already in that space. Um, but what we found out through that experience is that some courses just don't put themselves well in that online environment. Um, there is a need to have the hands-on experiential learning for students, um, but we lack the facilities in the space to be able to do that. And so again, this project was a desire to be able to expand upon that. And I've referred this, referenced this many times uh within our district, we have high quality students, we have high quality staff. This project is about providing a high quality facility for those. Um, move on to next slide, please. Um, and just simply from workforce perspective, one of the things it is part of the planning grant was um survey our, our regional industries and and look at their workforce needs and reference that in the previous slide is one of the big bullet points. Um, we asked the simple question of if you could, you know, have a magic wand and fill all your positions, what would that look like? That number of seventeen hundred, this was um again back in twenty one, so I don't think that number has gone down. Since then, I think also significantly seventy one percent of those companies indicated that workforce challenges are limiting their prosperity in the Grand Forks region. So um CTE centers both in Grand Forks and across the state of the centers that have been approved, the applications um really are part of that workforce strategy, concept and pipeline, next slide, please. Uh, this was referenced against site plan by Mr. Phil in terms of the location, look at five people locations actually within the community, one of them being the location you're looking at here tonight. Uh, with the field of the proximity to Gateway Drive, which is certainly symbolic and talking about finding gateways of opportunities for students as they pursue career pathways, um, but also accessibility off of the interstate. Um, Gateway Drive also connects our post-secondary partners to this project, including Northland Community Technical College, UND, Lake Region State College. So there's some symbolism uh behind uh this space, but it also um is a uh, is certainly um uh effective space for us in terms of being able to put the site there um and have um accessibility for students both in town and on a town and in proximity industry. Next slide. Uh, Mr. Phil asked about uh programming, just wanted to provide a, a quick overview of that and we take a look at the programming. We really looked at three key factors, student interest, these are elective courses, the high school levels, students are choosing to be there. They're also gonna need to choose to um logistically get themselves to and from. Uh, obviously the school districts are responsible for some of that travel and transportation as well, but this idea would be is um, they're gonna need to make a, a conscious choice to be able to be uh participating in these courses. And we start talking about students from rural communities uh come in, um, there's some windshield time that might be involved with in that. Um, at the same time, uh, so we surveyed our students, we, we actually conducted three thousand five hundred surveys of our students to ask them about their interest, not only in participating in these courses, but actually um traveling to participate in these courses. Um, the second one um was post-secondary training education opportunities are referenced, our three post-secondary partners, Lake Region State College, University of North Dakota and Northland Community Technical College, what regional post-secondary training education options are available for students after their experience, at least at the high school level, um, whether it's at the one, two or four year level. Uh, we felt that was critically important. And then um again, referenced very much the regional workforce need, um, looked at a lot of survey data, a lot of uh metrics related to what are the in-demand uh in inversion occupations within the Grand Forks region that we could help make students aware of and start promoting at an earlier age. Next slide. These are just quick four plans, I'll, I'll reference the, the, it's a two-story building, um, a combination of high base spaces. We think about automotives and the high base or building trades, um, combined with single-story uh facility labs and programs as well. Um, so the, the programs are listed on the right-hand side in the legend. Um, so beyond the administrative and support spaces, we have uh, uh, the programs and, and course offerings to automotives. Uh, no particular order here, uh, building trades, culinary arts are new for our um area, uh, engineering and robotics, uh, precision agriculture, precision technologies, um, and then um, uh, aviation also on that lower level. Uh, certainly working off of the UAS uh presence within our community uh and, and wanting to be able to expand upon those opportunities for our students. And so um, uh, and then engineering, I hadn't mentioned that one, that's also on the main level. So you can see this kind of a way out, um, uh, some of these spaces require dedicated labs with specified equipment. Others uh may be more um traditional in terms of classroom setting, uh, but again, hands-on opportunities for students that are, are appropriate. Uh, next slide. Uh, what this is showing is two alternates to uh the base bid, um, and when we get to the schedule, talk a little bit about the base bid. Uh, to the north, that is a multi-purpose space, think of it as kind of a commons or uh gym uh with barge overhead doors on each side and be able to get uh pieces of equipment in, uh, but functional, be able to utilize it for a job fair or community activities and events. Uh, that's an alternate to the base bid into the uh, the southwest, that uh is an alternate option for uh supporting the welding program. Next slide. Second floor, uh, again, um, this is where um we find a medical career suite of spaces as well as information technology and some questions, the ability to expand on program offerings in the future. These programs uh encapsulate both the new programs uh available for our students, but also an expansion of programs, medical careers might be a great example. Uh, we have high student interest in these courses. Um, we have obviously a great regional workforce um training opportunities at the one, two or four-year level. And we obviously have a huge workforce need in that area, but that's a space that we've been turning students away, at least at the secondary level, because we don't have the capacity to serve them. Um, so medical careers allows us to be able to expand and provide more space, more opportunities for those students in a very much in-demand career field. Next slide. Uh, this is just showing the alternates in the second floor, next slide. So a quick uh review of, of funding, uh, again, wide community support city council was a huge part of that with the value of the donated land that you're discussing tonight. Uh, we also were able to fundraise uh from sixty industry partners locally, um, over eleven million dollars of pledges. Uh, that includes support from not only the, the city, again, through the value of the land, uh, the demolition of the former Holiday Inn building, the abatement of the asbestos, um, but also um pledges from the Grand Forks County, uh, Chamber of Commerce, Second Act Development Corporation, uh, just numerous uh foundations and and industry partners and your private citizens uh that stepped up to all pledge um support for this community project, which is um um certainly, I think, unique to our project, when you look at the, the seventeen grant applications received by the state, I don't think any one of them could have showcased the, the wide community support that, that this one did. Um, is why I was ranked um uh number two on, on the list, we're one point behind Dickinson, but that's another story. Um, and then uh, the North Point Sixty Eighth legislative assembly, uh, we had um, maybe symbolic. Uh, we had um the first bill in the session that was passed and signed into law, and the last bill in the session signed into law. Um, the first bill provided the ten million dollars that we've been patiently waiting for from the federal level that would have been approved. The last bill of the session provided additional three million dollars for this project um to help uh address some of the um inflationary costs or crossovers. And so thirteen million dollars came through that uh legislative assembly, along with some language um discussing um the ability to have additional carryover funds um allocated based on a couple of things, one would be is if any of those other projects, CTE projects, the eleven that were approved, if they did not proceed, for whatever reason, the reallocation of those uh appropriate funds. if they did not proceed, for whatever reason, the reallocation of those appropriate funds to the projects that are moving forward. The other piece of language was there are some remaining broadband infrastructure funds that were allocated from the Capitol coronavirus projects grant. And again, if there's any leftover funds in that pocket, that will also then be relocated to the CTE centers across the state. And then we've obviously been continuing to search additional sources, and it's a, we've been successful with obtaining some equipment grants, close to two hundred million dollars. We've, this project specifically in the location of the land qualifies for something referred to as new market tax credit. Our business managers worked very strongly, and it seems promising that that could potentially provide, again, a big influx of cash to this project as well. And it's a, we're certainly in a great position to make this a reality. And I guess the other thing I would say would be is failure is not an option for this project. This is, this is something that we feel is a need for our community, for our students. We're excited to be able to finally get to the point where we're talking about putting shovels in the ground. So with that, the next slide. Just in case you want to know industry partners, what it looks like, the visual does it better justice to manage that in terms of, it's remarkable, it is because of that slavery through this project we successful. And again, City Grand Forks, kudos to you for being a key player in this, throughout the way it wouldn't be here without you. Next slide. So the last slide is just another rendering of the exterior of the building. I scheduled next steps on here, and I just would like to call Sean Sensical from J L G Architects. He'll walk through just where we're at in the design process and, you know, bidding, air to maximum pricing, shovels in the ground, that type of stuff. So Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Ripley, Mr. Sensical. Good evening, President Sandy and members of council, as Eric said, I'll touch a little bit on the schedule and timeline for the project. You'll notice in the staff report, there's a schedule for the next couple of months. I'll just highlight a couple of things directly from that staff report. We started in March and progressing through the end of this month in the design development phase, which is the second phase out of three phases in typical design schedule. At the end of this month, we'll be delivering documentation to P C L community, who's the construction manager on the project. They're gonna take that documentation and put the project up for bid to get a G M P or guaranteed maximum price for the project. They will take June and kind of the beginning of July to receive bids on the project. During that timeline, the design teams are gonna continue throughout the summer and into August to finish up construction documents, which is the third phase of design and documentation project. P C L community will, I should step back. The reason we elected on this project as a team to do an early G M P bid package, I was trying to insulate ourselves from even further escalation on the project, just by waiting an additional three more months, we're saving valuable dollars in escalation. That was the reason why we grew it up for a bit a little bit earlier than the normal projects. So P C L will deliver the G M P to the school district beginning or, excuse me, end of July. We'll proceed with the approval of the Grand Forks Public Schools, and we're hopeful that construction will begin this fall. The project, we're looking at a sixteen to eighteen-month construction schedule. And so the ultimate goal is that by the fall of twenty twenty-five, we'll be ready for classes. If you do kind of the math between this fall sixteen to eighteen months, there's a chance that we could finish, you know, summer of twenty twenty-three, in which case I'd give the school district a little bit of time to move in, to kind of soft opening, potentially have some summer camps for students. But again, the ultimate goal of being ready by the fall of twenty twenty-five. Any questions on schedule or timeline?
Any questions for Chair O'Gin? Thank you for that update.
Thank you, Mr. Ripley. I actually have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I know that when the school district first came to us and asked for support, there was some, maybe in my mind, some question as to how the governance of this facility would work. I, in my mind, thought it would be something like this building or maybe the Beacon, where there would be an advisory committee that would be made up of community members. From what I, from what I've been told and from what I've heard, the ultimate authority comes down to the school board on how this facility is managed. Do you know, are they talking about an advisory committee made up of folks that actually employ the people that are gonna be coming through here?
That's a, that's a great question, President Sandy. So I can speak a couple of things. Very common in current technical education, actually part of our approval standards at the state level is every one of our program areas has to have what's referred to as an advisory committee made up of stakeholders that are specific to that program area. So I'll just use automotives, for example. So on our automotive advisory committee right now, we have members from industry. We have members that represent the post-secondary training programs that could, could be the next step for students. And there are some advisors where we have former students or some advisory committees where you have current students actually on there to provide their perspective. So those will continue to be in place for each of the individual programs. However, to your point, and I think well taken, as part of our application was come an overarching community advisory board, for lack of a better term, right? Key stakeholders from the city, the economic development corporation, chamber, county, district, etc.
Yeah, I'm not telling you who to put on that committee. I'm just making the, asking the question, that's all.
Yeah, I, I think that that's really important. Again, this is a community building. You're exactly correct. The governance model is that this is a Grand Forks Public Schools facility. But at the same time, I think input from our community, broader community is important because that's what's gotten to this point right now.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for this group? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you. We're excited.
Awesome. No, receiving file, right? We actually are gonna approve the, we're gonna approve the land transfer in this one. Yes. Thank you, Mr. Ripley, Mr. Mosch, speaking of, Mr. Lunskey, second, thank you, Mr. Lunskey. Is there any other comments? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same sign. Most carries unanimously. Item three point nine has been, or we would like to postpone item three point nine until June, well, from June nineteen, city council meetings, moved by Wygle, second by Ososki. Any other comments? Are you none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same sign. Most carries unanimously. On three point two, dispatch personnel retention initiative. Ms. Lay, good evening.
Good evening. I'm here today to speak about a retention and overload initiative. As we all know, public safety answer and point, it's our mission to provide essential emergency communications to all our communities and responders throughout the county. And our most critical component is our talented and skilled dispatchers and personnel. And over the past months, we've worked in tandem with H R through four internal promotions, backfilling these positions and taking on an approach to think outside the box for recruitment, hiring and retaining our individuals and of course, training new people. And as we work to build a positive working environment for our staff to look for incentives that we can offer, they've taken on different roles for the onboarding, the training, extra staffing. And the past six months, we've had just continuous training, and by training, I don't mean like a classroom training. Our team leaders, who are supervisors, are trainers, and also taking calls for service and dispatching as well. So they're wearing three hats each shift. And we'll be continuing to do that since our training program is extensive. It's four months where we don't have an academy per se, where they go, it's all in-house training. And we've also had some unexpected F M L A leave coverage. And so we're looking at this idea of retention and overload effort, which has been successful for other businesses, the university, and other dispatch centers where they use this to recognize the skilled talent that they have. This initiative would be a one-time initiative outlined and fall within our budget parameters. The H R director supports this as well, and it would be a total cost of twenty-six thousand dollars, which is covered well within our, our budget at this time. I stand up for questions.
Questions.
I guess I have a quick question. So didn't we approve not too long ago that we were gonna hire like a third party, right? To help us with this? And we're still having issues with coverage then?
Yes, just they're covering basically one person's shift every day, so they cover twelve hours a day. With that, we still have, like I said, our, our trainers, our, our team leaders are covering training, taking calls themselves and ensuring everything is done right on shift.
How much are we paying these people? Our, like, what's the salary?
Our staff or?
Yeah, how much are we paying the staff that would receive?
Our staff is like our full-time staff is what this covers, like our full-time staff is, so it varies, whatever their. Our starting salary right now is twenty-one fifty-eight, but our team leaders, I don't have the outline of what each person makes.
But that's like if we were gonna hire a brand new person.
Twenty-one fifty-eight is starting salary.
For?
For hour.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sorry. Thank you. This is a one-time thing. Some other centers like Walsh County and State Radio, what they do for, theirs is an onboarding bonus where they take four thousand and spread it over three years to retain those people. This was a different approach, just looking at the past year for what our staff, the past six to nine months and the rest of this year as to what they're providing for our center.
What happens if this doesn't work, then what's the plan?
The plan I'm working with H R is to do a highly focused talent acquisition where we, right now, we've done career fairs, done more recruitment items, but we're gonna be looking more at specific individuals who have the skills set that we need. We're also going to do somewhat of an open house or a prospect day where people can come in and see what it's like. Cause I don't know that you may, we're on T V, but until you sit down and you're under the headset, I'm not sure that people may understand whether it's a good fit for their lifestyle. And that's what we found with some people. Thank you.
Mr. Wygle?
Thank you, President Sandy. For me, it's, this is something I see daily. It's something that it could be somebody that's stuck in a piece of farm equipment, or it could be them walking somebody through how to do CPR on a loved one. And so for me, I, I look at the twenty-one dollars an hour roughly, and I say that's not enough money. We got our salary plan back. We haven't fully adopted that. I understand that. But if you look at certain positions, there might be a two to four thousand dollar sway either way. When you look at our nine-on-one dispatchers that work weekends, that work holidays, that work nights, that work in blizzards, that, that work twenty-four seven, there's a thirteen thousand dollar swing from, if I'm reading the graph correctly. And so I'm appreciative of H R and Shannon bringing this forward. I think it, it's something that needs to be done, but again, I think this is a Band-Aid that's gonna get us through a little bit of time, and I'd ideally like to adjust the starting salary for these pensions to move something forward that way.
Sure, and I think this part of the budgeting process, we're, we're gonna be looking at all of the salaries across this city. I think it's also important to note is you're on the P S A board, so I will. P S A funding, although they have the funding to cover this, it's not all City of Grand Forks funds that go in there. The, all true, the U N D, the county all contribute to that fund. So it's not just, we're, we're the fiduciaries that are respect, excuse me, responsible for, for those funds, but it, it is funded across the community. So and I certainly can't argue anything that you're mentioning. These are people that are very important to our community as the calls for service continue to increase in, in Grand Forks or Grand Forks County.
Just one more question. Shannon, what, you said you have this in your budget, the twenty-six thousand. Do you have the ability to, we can't adjust the salaries today. Do we have the ability to go farther with this?
I'd have to sit down and find answers to crunch the numbers and make sure.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't wanna say yes and then come short.
No, I understand.
Maybe close, just because we're low staff, but again, I don't wanna, I wouldn't wanna put that out there without being able to, to stand up to it.
Perfect. If you could bring that back for next week, I think it's a good start to start somewhere. But ideally, I think we need to address the salaries, and I think that's gonna help with retention more than anything.
Okay.
So is that a motion, Mr. Ripley?
Motion to move this to city council meeting.
For the staff recommendation and second by Ososki. Further comment?
No, I was just gonna say something identical or supportive of what Mr. Wygle said. It seems like we need to do more. This is more of a Band-Aid.
And then in support of that for next week, you'd like more information as to what could be supported?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Very good. There are no other comments. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same sign. Most carries unanimously. Can I get a motion to thank you, Ms. Lay? Can I get a motion to reschedule item three eleven, motion by, third meeting by Ososki, second by Wygle. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All the same sign. Most carries, last but not least, item three twelve, city council agenda format revised, citizen comment policy. Mr. Gosted, do you wanna do a quick overview?
Thank you, Council President Sandy and members of the committee. This does kind of meld the current policy that is in existence and then taking information from Mr. Devami as well, particularly with the public decorum provisions of it. What this does is it really sets up two citizen comment periods, one, right, for the action item that would be limited to comments on the upcoming action items for that particular meeting. And then there'd be one at the end of the meeting or general comments that would be opened up any comment. Each one of them are limited to five minutes. You can't take two minutes and then say, I've got three to go to the general comment section. It's five minutes a piece. It, it also provides that who can speak. Those that are residents of Grand Forks, those that have a business in Grand Forks, own real estate in Grand Forks, or an employee within Grand Forks, also put informations that students at University of North Dakota would be deemed to be citizens. And also put the Air Force Base in there that they're considering governmental, like, see within the cities that would encompass all those employees that are, that may not live within Grand Forks but work at the Air Force Base. I think the public decorum provisions were, were helpful. And hopefully, this, this will tone down some meetings and nail persons you're seeing. And it also provides the presiding officer the authority to go ahead and, and ask people to sit down. If they, if they go over their five-minute period of time, that's be destructive. And, and some situations in respect to the presiding officer to have a person leave. The other thing is that these are rules that apply to you, to me, to anybody in the meeting, and it applies to all meetings, not just city council, but planning and zoning. But the public comment only be during city council meetings. That's a very brief summary.
That's excellent. That's a very good summary and encapsulated the discussion that we had last week. I think you did a very good job, Mr. Gosted. You also emailed out and asked for some input and I appreciate that your attention to detail and that. Thank you. Any, anyone have any comments or thoughts about the, I, I, I think you captured our discussion quite well. Whether people agree with what's on paper or not, I think you actually got, got it what, what the majority of the people have been. Proven. So anybody dislike what Mr. Gosted did or wanna suggest anything else? Or Miss Ososki doesn't like it, but she was on record last week not liking it as well.
Exactly. So my feelings don't change, or haven't changed.
Just wanna hit you button if you wanna.
I'm sorry. I really don't have another comment. I, I disagree with making any changes at this point. I feel like it looks a little bit like retaliation, you know. I don't like it. I don't think we should make any changes. I think that it should be something maybe we should discuss next year.
Thank you, Ms. Ososki.
Further comment? Yes, Mr. B?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting any changes, just, just putting up board here. One of the things though that I thought, I think maybe I saw this in Bismarck or something that I would like to see some courage comments to be in writing and submitted in advance by email, if we possibly could. Um and then when people do get up and speak, they can maybe give a summary of what they've they've received. I know this is work very successfully in the legislature. So then we have something in writing from them, um and it's more specific to to the topic. And if not, then I want to change it. I would just say that that's a recommendation to people that I think is working quite successfully.
Yeah, so a general comment, people that are interested in being on the record should should be emailing the city, whether it's a council member or city administration. And and there's nothing wrong with showing up to to speak as well. I I agree. That's a record.
I never received an email from Mr. Gosted about the proofread or whatever that he sent that you were able to make comments on. I never received them.
This Mr. Gosted actually sent me the opening paragraph in a text message and asked me if if I encapsulated what we, and I said, um I think we had talked about, uh remind me, Mr. Gosted, but it was um oh, if you work in the city but don't live in the city, I wanted to make sure that that was captured. But it's everything that I've got is right here, with the exception of people that work in the city need to be a comment for as well.
Yes, sir.
Any any other thoughts, Moslinsky? Any thoughts?
No, it's great.
Okay. Shall I go?
I think we're gonna vote individually. Is that correct?
Uh on each one of the provisions in here?
Right. I guess it'd be difficult to do considering.
One, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to? I I think the the motion would be to approve uh common guidelines and policies as provided, but if you're interested in making an amendment to it, I welcome that.
For the sake of time tonight, um
We're move and second and move it to next week, and then next week, we can certainly take any amendments that anyone's interested in.
I think, yeah, I think that'd be appropriate. I'll move approval on the staff report of the revised citizen common policy as noted in three twelve.
Mr. Wygle, is there a second? Second by Moszowski. Further comment? Are you none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Uh Mr. Moszowski, the sense.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. We're creating this process. We've created this process for the proof citizen common. So I think our next council meeting is at council two weeks, right? It's only two weeks. At that meeting, the public will have opportunity of input into this too, right?
That's correct.
So that will be the time that we can hear from them beyond what we've done in this conversation.
And and beyond last week's conversation, certainly. People are welcome to speak again.
Right. Any other uh any other comments? Okay, uh Mr. Wygle, any any specific guidance tonight for the get of the order?
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Moszowski? Ms. Moszowski? Uh Mr. Kevan?
No, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Dave? So, okay, well, is there a motion to adjourn? So I Wygle, second by Moszowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And sign.